We're going to do it, basically we're going to talk about general information on council. Council Orientation Handbook that we started working on this year. It's not an exact final product that I like, but it's something that we can build on for the next two years. Plan on doing a little talking about current and future projects, and then we'll do some goal-setting at the end of the day. This is basically the agenda. I'm going to talk about, there's three speakers here today. It'll be me, I'm going to start off with, and I'm going to talk about local government and general administration. I'm going to do a departmental review, basically talk about my staff, and then we'll talk about current and future projects. Then hopefully about that time it'd be break time. After that Doug will take the floor, and he'll get in all the legalities of it, the rules, FOIA, FOIA, all the, as Doug says, devils in the details. So Doug will do his presentation, and then we'll take another break, and then we'll, BJ will take over, and he'll talk about financials, talk about all the different accounts we have in town, and what, how that, all that revenue is generated. So hopefully at the end of the day, we're going to touch on areas you were unaware of, or areas that, you know, reinforce what you already knew. It's very informal, got any questions, ask. First thing I wanted to do was just talk about the different types of local government. When you talk about local governments, you have a town, a city, and a county. So we're a town of Front Row, we reside in the County Warren, and then there are cities like the city of Winchester. The reason I bring this up is when you look at local government, and particularly towns and cities, there are basically mainly two forms of government. One is called the mayor-council form of government, and the other one's called council-manager. In a mayor-council form, the mayor is basically the executive and administrative authority. That mayor is the one who runs the town, like Washington DC on a bigger, grander scale, the mayor. Nationally, 43% of the cities use this form of government, but only one city in Virginia, and that's the city of Richmond. You will normally see this in small towns. And there's actually, if you've been watching the papers over in Stevens City, there's this controversy because they've been trying to make this transition from mayor to council to council-manager form. What happens is, I don't know that exact sweet spot, but when a town gets big enough, it then requires more supervision, more administration than a mayor who couldn't do that, or not be able to have the staff to do that. So this is our type of form of government that we use. It's most widely used in all cities across the nation, even in Canada. And basically points out that citizens elect town council. Town council will then hire staff, the town manager, and then the town manager will manage the town staff, who reports back to the town manager, who then reports to town council, and then obviously town council is responsible for the citizens. But, big takeaways here, town council is responsible for policy formation, while the town manager is responsible for implementation and oversight of the day-to-day activities. Any questions on that? Went kind of through that fast, but it's sometimes to recognize the two different major forms of government, and I think it was quite interesting watching some of the, reading some of the news articles about what's going on in Stevens City, and where they're making that transition from mayor to council to manager, or council-manager form. Alright, town council powers and responsibilities. Now, some of these next few slides are going to be redundant because Doug is going to reinforce a lot of this stuff. But when we talk about, our powers are defined by the town's charter, the Code of Virginia, and the Virginia Constitution. We are a Dillon Rule State, which means the Commonwealth establishes and confers our local government authority. What that means is that if the Commonwealth, unless the Commonwealth has enacted us to allow the town to exercise certain powers, the town cannot regulate, the town cannot regulate a specified action or activity. Our regulatory ability must be established in the Code of Virginia. A key example of this is when we went and had our charter changed to allow us to address the issues that we need to in the property maintenance. To have that power, we had to go to the state legislator to give us that power. So just kind of an example. Quick basics, obviously, this should be very familiar, the mayor's elected every two years, officially the head of town council. The mayor also sets agendas for each meeting and presides at every meeting in council. The vice mayor, chosen by council every two years, and official duties in the absence of the mayor. Town council, obviously six members, staggered elections every two years for three members, and then staff appointments. Town council has three employees, clerk of council, town attorney, and town manager. This is a little bit more breakout on the three staff levels that the council hires. Clerk of council is responsible for distribution of town council agendas amended, and serves the liaison between council and the public. Town attorney, legal counsel to the mayor, council, town manager, staff, other town boards, commissions, and committees. And then town manager serves as chief administrative officer for the town's daily operations. Alright, now I want to shift gears, and I want to talk about all the commissions and committees that council is involved in and recommends or places citizens on these boards. These boards are really an integral part in our community because it allows citizens to get involved in local government, and allows citizens to make a positive impact. The more buy-in that we have in the community, the more success we're going to have. For example, the big one, Planning Commission. Responsibilities include making critical zoning and planning recommendations to town councils, all matters related to orderly growth and development of the town, such as site plans, special use permits, rezoning, zoning land development ordinances. Commission is made up of six members, staggered, four-year terms. They have a standing meeting on the third Wednesday of every month, and they have work sessions in between those. Key point, members must be a free holder of land and reside in town limits. They're provided stipends for service, and all this is also found in the Town Code, Chapter 28. As y'all aware, we're going to be interviewing for the Planning Commission Monday night. Oh, really? Okay. Alright, we'll follow up on that. So there's the Planning Commission. Board of Zoning Appeals. Going back to the Planning Commission, you're going to see a lot of this for an example right now with the beer museum parking. Planning Commission made their recommendation, forwarded up to council, and council chose to evaluate that, evaluate their recommendations. But as always, it's a recommendation and council has full authority. Alright, Board of Zoning Appeals. They're responsible for deciding whether variances from the town zoning regulations can be granted, and to listen to appeals on administrative decisions of zoning ordinances or interpretations of the zoning map, where there's uncertainty in the location of the district boundary. The BGA is a five-member board appointed by the Circuit Court Judge of Warren County. Council will interview, give the recommendation to the judge, and then the judge appoints that member. Members serve a five-year stagger term. They meet on the third Tuesday of the month. Members must reside in town limits, they're also provided a stipend for service, and they're found in Chapter 175, 138. Alright, wrong one. Okay. Now the BAR. Board of Artwork Review. Is responsible for issuing or denying certificates of appropriateness for construction, reconstruction, substantial exterior operations, and raising or relocation within the historical district overlay area. The BAR, also a five-member board, serving four-year stagger terms. Now here, they can live in the county as well. They can live in town or county, they're also provided a stipend for service, and it's also found in Town Chapter 175, 84. And decisions of the BAR can be appealed to town council. Prime example of that was the afternoon in the early stages last year, the BAR denied the demolition of it. And so they appealed that decision to council to reevaluate it. Luckily, things worked out, and it was not necessary.
I thought that said, say that they can't appeal back to the council.
Has it? Okay.
Would like to hear a little bit on that.
The VAR is not, uh, the, it's now, uh, uh, wait a minute. No, that's the, I'm sorry, that's the BGA. You're thinking, the VAR, I'm sorry, it is the VAR.
You're right, I agree.
It used to be the BGA.
Okay. Got it. Because it caught me off-guard, I have to.
Okay, so that stands there. Alright, let me put a pause real quick, because I came out of the gate real fast and didn't have all my checkboxes. First of all, I want to let you know that everything that you're going to see today, even as well as that piece of paper we handed out, is all on your iPad. It's in a folder called 2019 Council Summit. Everything that we have, that you're going to be presented today, is there. What you have there right now is something that we worked on this year of having just a basic manual, a reference manual, that council could refer to. And the reason this is good is because there's a couple pages just talks all about these committees. And so, and then there's departmental pages in there, talks about what their purpose is, and what they do. It's something that I'm hoping that we can work on for the next cycle going around, and really get it polished. So I wanted to get that out there in front of y'all. Like I said, I came out of the gate a little fast, and was not, missed the mark. Alright, another committee, UFAK, Urban Forestry Advisory Commission. UFAK is responsible for developing standards and guidelines for planning, maintaining, and preservation and replacement of trees on public property, any land disturbing activities on private property, as well as promoting education to the general public. Now, the commission currently has a five-member board appointed by town council. We are currently advertising for a public hearing at the request of the chairman of the UFAK committee to add one more member. So this committee will eventually be going up to a six-member board body appointed by town council. The members serve a four-year stagger term. Members must live in town or county. This is also found in Town Code, Chapter 156, and the town's Horticultural Department works very closely with this group. One of the difference between this group is there is no stipend for services, these are people just dedicating their time for this. Okay, now the Northern Shandau Valley Regional Commission. Our new appointee, Ms. Thompson. The commission represents a five-county area in the northernmost portion of Virginia-Shandau Valley, which is including the city of Winchester, counties of Clark, Frederick Page, Shandau, Warren, and all the towns contained in their boundary. Their really main responsibility is to provide regional and local planning and program support. You know, it's kind of one of those things where cost reduction, as what, you know, cost reduction in numbers, when you're dealing with an issue that everybody needs to deal with. The commission, what we do is we have an elected representative that is appointed to serve the term, to serve the length of their term, and then a non-elected representative, which is a staff member, to a three-year term. Those meetings are held monthly. Not too sure if they have a set meeting date like the other committees. That's the information I didn't follow through on. Alright, the Audit Finance Committee. The Audit Finance Committee is created to allow members of the town council and town staff to meet with the auditors, to be made aware of any financial conditions of the town. The committee is composed of the mayor, two appointed council members, finance director, town manager, and the town auditors. Technically, we only meet once a year, but sometimes there is a possibility you meet more than once, probably maybe twice a year. Council members serve a one-year term. This will be something y'all will be addressing Monday night. Y'all will have to make a determination on who is going to sit on the Audit Finance Committee this year. Last year was Gene and, yeah, Gene and Mrs. A new committee that got formed last year, it's called the Joint Tourism Advisory Committee. And this, this committee was developed to advise, assist, and support, and advocate for tourism policies, programs, and activities that did not just promote Front Row, but promote Front Row in Warren County. And this is a result of the use of the county's tax dollars to use towards tourism out in the corridor. It's a nine-member board, serving four-year terms. Members included are Director of Community Development and Tourism, Felicia Hart, Warren County's Planning Director, President of Chamber of Commerce, and six members that are appointed equally between the town and county, with the requirement that two members be part of lodging. This is money that actually county is accumulating, and I think it's a great movement to work together and have some synergies, instead of doing redundant marketing and that sort of thing. But this is a fairly new committee, not even a year old yet, so we'll see how well it performs. Another new committee that was formed last year, another necessity that was long overdue is the Joint Towing Advisory Board. Was created to ensure proper storage, availability, and service by persons of firms to operate towing service at the request of our local law enforcement, the Front Row PD, Warren County, state police, and other law enforcement agencies. This allows us to make sure that our citizens, that if they're involved in an accident or something, that their vehicle doesn't get transported over into another county, and that also we can have, make sure that our citizens are not held hostage by an accident and a fee to get towed. Seven-member board serving on this committee with four-year terms. All seven members are jointly appointed by town and county. Three members are from the towing and recovery business, three members are law enforcement, one from Front Row, Warren County, and one from the state, and then one member as a citizen representative. This is also found in Town Code Charter 158, 59, 158, 64. I'll be honest with you, everything I'm saying is, oh, in the code. Yeah, so. I'm going to cover a few slides here that will be redundant in some degree after Doug takes the floor, but I had a few slides in from a previous presentation, so I left them in there. But on closed sessions, all meetings of town council shall be open to the public, except when the public welfare requires closed session. Town council may go into closed session and exclude the public for certain stated reasons. Closed sessions issue typically involve personnel, property, undisclosed business prospects, and legal briefings. While in closed sessions, council can discuss only the subject mentioned in the motion. Like I said, Doug's going to follow up on a lot of this stuff, but these are just some quick bullet points. Public hearings. Public hearings are to receive input from citizens and affected parties regarding, you know, setting tax rates, fees, adopting fiscal budgets, amendments to the ordinances, rezoning, special permits, requests, and etc. In general, this is important that when we decide to have a public hearing, it needs to be advertised once a week for two consecutive weeks. So a lot of times when we'll come out of a work session and council wants to proceed with an ordinance change or something, that requires this public notification. That's why there's normally about a six-week lag time between when council requests something to get that public hearing on schedule. Public hearings, this is important, public hearings are not intended to be a discussion between the public and council. Questions directed at council by the public can be addressed by council during the discussion following a motion on the agenda item. By Town Code, two reading votes of all new and amended ordinances setting the tax rate and fees and other annual budgets are required. The first reading vote typically occurs at the public hearing. The second reading occurs at least seven days following the first reading or vote. Thank God. Alright, alright. Conflict of interest, also Doug will touch on this, but the primary purpose of the FOIA Act is to regulate financial relationships with council members and with outside interests. Like I said, Doug will have a lot more legalities on that. Freedom of Information Act, FOIA, really boils down to have an open government, transparency. Anybody can FOIA something to a certain degree, anything that they seem necessary. A lot of times, 95% of the time it's the press trying to do news stories and stuff like that. Alright, we're going to shift gears now. I want to talk about Front Row's local government. Obviously, we've got to remember our birth date, we were chartered in November 15th, 1788. We serve approximately 15,000 citizens, and the town currently has 174 full-time employees and 12 part-time positions. Staff is what makes this town run. We've got a great staff, and without them, we wouldn't achieve the success that we achieved over the years, because we've got local, local citizens that are working for us. When we talk about town government operations, I break it into two categories. You've got general administration, which is supported by tax dollars, and then you've got our enterprise funds. Now, they're supported by services only, no tax dollars. So it's kind of important to remember that, and when BJ gets up and takes the stage, he'll talk about those different buckets. I call them buckets, but they're different enterprise funds and different accounts. When we look at general administration, you've got to think of the normal stuff, such as finance department, the police department, community development, tourism, planning, zoning, public works, which is streets, concrete. Those are the things that our tax dollars are paying for. Talking about general administration, I want to now go through a few slides and talk about my senior staff. BJ Wilson, who is our Director of Finance, is right behind y'all. He was actually hired in 2008 as a financial analyst, and was promoted to manager of finance, and then in August of 2016, he became a director. Staff has about approximately 14 employees. They do customer serving, billing, purchasing, and meter reading. They don't just take bills on taxes, they also take all utility billing, which is an animal in itself. And we'll go over a few statistics on what our customer bases are, but you can figure when you've got about 7,000 accounts here or there, we do have some issues that we deal with in the public. HR Risk Management, Julie Bush. She was hired in January of 2005 as director. I won't read what HR Risk Management does, but it's pretty self-explanatory. Our manager of HR Risk Management, Laura McIntosh. She was hired in 2011 as a financial analyst, promoted up to current position in 2016 as manager. Risk Management, she mainly primarily handles risk management along with HR, with dealing with adequate insurance coverage, accident investigation, claims management, which sometimes is a little, a little busy at moments. Next is our IT department, Todd Jones. He was hired in 2011 as a manager of IT, promoted to director in 2015. Got staff of two employees, that's including him. We're more and more, our IT department is getting tacked with the new technologies that we're using. Even in the PD world with body cameras, that is a huge investment and a huge maintenance issue that we have to continually keep on top of. And those discussions will be carried on when we start talking budget in the next month or so. Planning zoning, Jeremy Camp. He was hired in 2011 as director. Planning zoning, has staff of five employees. Obviously, they handle planning, code enforcement, GIS, and Jeremy on the boards and commissions, like when we were talking about with the Planning Commission, the BAR, the BGA, maybe not the BGA, but the BAR, and he's heavily involved in those. His planning zoning, he is heavily involved in all those committees. Engineering department, our town engineer is Robert Brown. He was hired in November of 2018. Has 20 years' experience from the city of Winchester and Penone. He's been very successful on his hire on quite a bit of good project management skills, where we completed the bridge, and we're in a process at the Avtech site, which I'll talk about a little bit more as we move forward. Next is our Public Works Department. Robbie Boyer is the director. He was hired in 2000 as a utility line technician, was promoted to a water steward supervisor in '05, then promoted to manager level in 2017, became director in 2018. Public Works is one of our huge, one of our biggest departments, about 78 employees, but when you think about the, this includes not just general administration employees, but this includes enterprise employees as well, because you can see where you've got fleet man, fleet management, streets, that's all general administration, but when you start talking water, wastewater, those are enterprise funds, they're supported by their service fees. But this is a very big department, but they've got a lot of responsibilities, a lot. Alright, our Community Development and Tourism, Felicia Hart. She was hired in 2016 as a contract employee. Town did hire her in 2017 as an employee with the additional responsibilities of being the tourism director as well. We combined those. We felt there was, I felt there was a need for some better supervision and direction down there at the visitor center, and I felt that it went hand in hand with the community development position. We've got a staff of 11 employees. Things that she's working on and staff are, is the Community Development Block Grant, recruiting new businesses, supporting existing businesses, and she's heavily involved, at least down here on the Main Street corridor, trying to keep those business relationships going. The visitor center and tourism zones. Alright, visitor center, the jewel of our community. I'm amazed when I go in there, to think about this thing, is open 362 days of the year. Open seven days a week, nine to five. And to tell you that that is staffed by four part-timers and 10 volunteers, it's impressive. And every time I go in there, there's a smile, and they're willing to tell you how great Front Row is. And if they're, and if they're painting that picture for our guests and our visitors, that's what we want. But that just shows you what small staff and the dedication of those staff and what they do down there. Well, I wanted to talk about the trolley. The trolley is also managed by tourism. Got a brochure out there. The reason I wanted to bring this to your attention is, our franchise agreement expires on this in September. So we're going to have to renegotiate the franchise agreement with, for the, I still want to call it frat bus, but for the Front Row's trolley. Talking about the police department, our chief police is Cale Miguelis. He was hired in 2017. He was previously a major at the Warren County Sheriff's Office since 98, was a graduate of the 264th Session of the FBI Academy. He's a graduate of the 264th Session of the FBI Academy. Police Department is our second biggest department, got 55 employees, just list the normal stuff there, administration, patrol, criminal, K-9, communications, drug task force, and community relations. Just a quick tidbit, just to let y'all know, we break the town down into three patrol sectors. We've got a north, the middle, and the south. But these divisions of workload per the officer, what it does allows faster response to keep a certain amount of vehicles in each sector. But it also allows our officers to become more accustomed and more familiar with the residents in their area. So, that allows us to have a better rapport with the ones that we are protecting. And so, just wanted to get that out there, let y'all know what we're doing and how we do that. Now, on the enterprise funds. These are all self-supported by their service fees, and they also funnel some money back to general administration. And the reason that is, is because, for example, Department of Finance does the billing for all these three. So, that way, the transfer of funds from these asset counts, these enterprise funds to the general administration is for, in relative speaking, is for those services that they perform. Water service. We serve about 6,000 residents. We've got about 119 miles of water line, 712 fire hydrants, I didn't realize that many. Our water service, we have eight employees in the maintenance department. When you talk about the water treatment plant, we produce about 2.3 NGD, million gallons per day. Our average daily consumption is about 1.8. We're permitted to supply four, but our plant capacity is at six. Obviously, we operate it 24/7, and we've got a staff of 12 employees at the water treatment Now, we talk about the other side, sewer service. Service to 5,900 residents. Looks like we've got a little bit more mileage on our sewer lines at 123. We've got eight employees in that department, it's the same eight employees in the water department, maintenance. Our wastewater treatment plant, we just completed that project last year. We currently treat about 3.8. Our capacity at the plant is 5.3, that's what we're permitted for. Obviously, we operate that 24/7 and a staff of 11 employees in the wastewater treatment plant. Right, and those numbers are really skewed this year with all the rain. I don't know if those numbers really match up to say that, yeah, we've got that much loss. I'm amazed at the wastewater treatment plant. If you know where it's located, there on Manassas Avenue, right across the river, try to have a wastewater treatment plant so close to a neighborhood and how staff there manages that, you would have never known. You'd never smell a thing, you know, that that gem out there is doing its job, and you just don't know. I'd live next to it. Solid Waste Department. We serve about 700 residents and businesses. We collect yard waste and tree trimmings. We have a farm site and a recycling area. We do this with a staff of 13 employees. This is a very labor-intensive job, just FYI, it's one of the issues that we've been dealing with over the past six months or a little longer, is openings in there. We've been, we've had some trouble getting help hired in that department. But it is very labor-intensive, but we're still providing an excellent service at the most cost-effective way we can. And the biggest thing to remember is, is we're here not to make money, we're here to serve and to provide a service at cost. And so, right now, we're holding our own, but just FYI, we do have some staffing issues we're working on, on that. And obviously, in a tight job market as we are in, those things do occur. Alright, David Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins, he was hired in 92 as a lineman, was promoted to manager and then named Director in July of 2017. We have 16 employees. We serve about 7,500 households and businesses in town. This group as well, also handles all the street lights and the traffic lights, crosswalks as well, crosswalk signalization as well. Alright, I'm going to shift gears again, and once I get done through this, we'll take a break. Current and future projects. First of all, our new PD, I've got two slides here of the renderings. It's two buildings, about 21,000 square feet. Main building is an administration building, which will hold our communications officers, detectives, and sorts. The second building more is a support building where K-9 will be, SWAT, and stuff like that. That's the back part of the support building. Right now, we're tentatively anticipating, as long as weather holds up, that project will be completed by March. I will have a better completion date after next week, but we are moving forward on that. I know that, but until my meeting next week, I'm not confident on the day of March. I may need to... Want to talk about our Crezer Road Bridge. We began construction in June of 2018. We completed it in November, actually, it wasn't completed till late December because we had a few, what do you want to call them, follow-up items from the job. The contract cost for the bridge was a little less than a million. Just to give you all some feedback, what had happened with this project, about two years ago, we ran into a construction easement issue that we had to work out with adjoining landowner. And then, once we got that worked out, when we went out for bids in 2017, price came back double, which was like 1.4, 1.5. And so, we decided to wait, you know, because, and believe it or not, that did pay off. Us waiting 68 months, we were able to get a contract price of 986,000 versus 1.4. So, it did pay off. And another thing too, when looking at this project, what, one of the things we were trying to minimize was the impact of the schools because of the traffic that people are going to that school. Roa Phoenix, a couple of slides here on the AVTEC site. We're working on the pump station. We began construction in 2018. We were scheduled for completion in December of 2018, but we're still in progress right now. Contract price for this is 470,000. Now, this will feed, this will service about 4,600 employees on that site. So, the thing to remember is that IT Federal initiated this process, but that's there to serve more than just IT Federal. It's there to serve 4,600, which I don't know how much build-out would require in the AVTEC site for that 4,600 employees, but I think it's something we wanted to worry about for a while. Now, there is provisions for another pump station on the, I guess, the northern eastern side of that, I'm not too sure, but there's a second one planned when it gets fully developed. West Main, we began on that on the 2018. We did get our base pavement down this year. We're coming back in the spring to do the final pavement. They did have sidewalks completed on one side, curb and gutter on the other side. Unfortunately, trying to do some of this stuff in the winter time, concrete paving. But, contract price was about 1.13. Like I said, we're not done with that yet either. I'm hoping in January as well. Okay, this is kind of an important project that we're talking about, and it's the 522 corridor study. It's basically got all initiated quite some time ago when Dominion came to town. And as part of their contract with us, they would like to have a redundant water source to feed their power plant. And with that, they were willing to contribute money for this loop. They were willing to contribute 75%, up to $3.5 million. So, we've been looking at different ways on how we can have a true redundant supply of water out in the corridor. To give you an idea, the agreement with Dominion Power, both parties agreed that it's beneficial for the system. Dominion said, okay, we're going to pay that 75% up to 3.5, but we want to be able to review and comment on the plans. We want a little skin. We're not obligated to do it, so it's important to recognize that we don't have to do this project if we don't want to. When we talked to Dominion on our first review, we looked at parallel lines, we looked at storage tanks and stuff. What we did was, we eliminated the storage tanks, and we looked at having a possible, we were looking at a couple of different ways, a redundant water source going up the corridor, but possibly on the other side of the road, so that there's at least some separation in that. We're also looking at possibly going across the country over on the Happy Creek side, which is really an ideal place, but then you're talking, you could be talking, numbers that I've seen, but they're old, are tin mill. But we don't know that for a fact. So, what we've done is, we've hired a company called CHA, and they are going to develop, they're going to identify the two best routes and connection points from the town out to the corridor. They're going to investigate all the constructabilities of this project, you know, and the entities that they're going to have to deal with, VDOT, DEQ, VDH, railroad crossings, you know, we've got the interstate and the river crossings. These things are, these can run up the price, as well as these acquisitions, you know. So, they're going to work on this, and they're going to present to council a plan of the two options with cost. I'm hoping that we can come back to council in late April with this proposed plan, Phase One feasibility study. And then, we'd move on to Phase Two with preliminary design and that. This is critical for a lot of reasons, not just the corridor, but it would benefit the whole town, and especially in particular, the northeast side, where we all have future development. Let's see here, if I have another slide? No, I don't. Thought I'd be remiss if not to talk about our stops campaign. In 2017, we kicked off, 2017, I think it was, yeah, 2017, early 2017, we had had several pedestrian accidents, one after another. Started looking at the stats, and we could see over the past three or four years, they were trending up, really trending up. And we felt like we just, we could not take a blind eye to this. So, we formed a committee together, Councilman Seelock joined us, put staff together. First thing we did was, well, we needed a campaign. So, we developed this thing called Stops Campaign, and Smart Towns Deserve Pedestrian Safety. I had a staff member down at Finance that designed a logo for us. We've got some banners out. What we did was, first got started, we developed a campaign, and then we started addressing where our issues were. First thing we recognized was, our crosswalks were not adequately done. They were, prior to us getting started, they were just two lines going across the road, which could be confused with a stop bar. There was no hashing out to really delineate what the pedestrian's walking space was. So, that was our first tackle in 2017. We spent considerable amount of money updating all the crosswalks. Also, during that same time, we did public education through the PD, reached out to the schools, to the senior citizens, and any other organization that would let us talk. Because this pedestrian incidents and this pedestrian accidents, bicycle accidents, everybody has to get in the game, everybody has a responsibility. And we will see, you know, it's not something, town is, this is a problem all around the world. People are in a hurry. But I'm hoping that we're making a difference. But I have to say, if we weren't doing this, we, I think there's probably more we can do on the public education side. Huh? Yeah, that's right. We did last year, we did, we did change the ordinance for jaywalking, to have some type of enforcement. We don't want to do sort of things like that, but sometimes you have to. Alright, pending projects, Westminster Drive. This project is finally, we've got headway on this. Sawing a five-foot sidewalk along the west side of Westminster Drive, this allowed connectivity to the high school down there off of John Marshall. Where, it, we went and did the first phase, which was removing the trees along that area. The problem was, it was a federal grant, and we had to wait for all these approval processes and everything. And I think this is coming up on a council meeting agenda, you know, on the 14th, you know, January 14th, we'll be approving the contract for the installation of that sidewalk. And I'm very pleased with that because we've, I've been asking for it for a year now, so...
Yeah, that's what's always bothering me, is coming on the council. I thought I'd take a stand on a curb and gutter sidewalk, because there you have a school. Why would we even allow outlets to build streets with not the appropriate improvements for walkers, bike lanes, school curbs? And I've seen it somewhere areas lately, and we're going to build new outlets and not put any curb and gutter of all things, and we're going to do roads. Doesn't make sense. Why should we even allow a barrier? Have you been all with it?
Yeah, and I agree, and I think as we move forward, like with the design of the new West Main, we're making those provisions now that we should have been doing in the past, bike lanes, sidewalks. So, I think it's just a change in philosophy. Alright, major project on the horizon, Happy Creek, Phase Two and Phase Three. Phase Two is the one, one right there on the bad S curve, on, and then Phase Three is that last stretch if you pass, at least from Parkway. What we've done is, there's a Phase Four, Happy Creek Phase Four, beyond that, that the county has. The county has already gotten approval from VDOT for that phase. So, what we did was, I combined Phase Two and Phase Three together. And we have submitted in the Smart Scale Program through VDOT, this project. We've worked with VDOT, and we've got a new estimate for this project, both phases, is $16.9 million. The thing to remember is, is that we do have money already allocated for this project, very small, but we have over a million dollars left over from Phase One that's over in here. The Smart Scale application projects will be reviewed, and we'll hear some news by the end of January. The beauty about Smart Scale is the new funding process through VDOT, but if your project's approved, it's 100% funded, it's not matching. Therefore, it is highly competitive and highly, you know, but we're hoping with what's going on in our community, and with Phase Four already being approved through the Smart Scale, that it would make good sense. And it's all on a ranking system. They rank these projects in all these different categories to determine who gets what. So, I'm really, I'm really hoping that we get approval on this.
With the scale, there is no matching process. On the scale, there is no matching funding?
No, on the Smart Scale, it's 100% funding. The other one, they're doing it alternate years eventually. They're gonna be doing them alternate years, so the Smart Scale applications only open up every two years. The thing is, reality is, even if it gets approved, we're looking at construction 2026. But then again, there's a lot of work that has to happen between now and construction. You know, you've got preliminary engineering designs, easements, and all that kinda stuff. So quite a bit of work there. But I'm hoping by the end of January, we'll know where we stand on this. This is critical. Also, other major projects on horizon. This is the Rural Phoenix site. You can see the first portion there is what we're building right now, West Main. It's about 800 some feet. This is the rest of Main Street that will swing over and connect to the other side of West Main. You can also look, I didn't include a slide, but you can see the different parcels. There's about six parcels in there in that AVTEC site, so you can see that. And this site, let's see here, there, right there is the IT Federal site.
Where did you come out of?
Oh, it's gonna come out. I haven't seen the details of where it connects to Kerfoot and Main, but I'm, way it looks there, it looks like it's gonna swing around and run continuously up, and people coming off Kerfoot would have to stop. But don't quote me on that, I don't know yet. Don't know actually how that traffic pattern's gonna really look at the end of the day. I have not seen it. But that's my vision of what it would be like, being it's still called West Main. Alright, and I only got one more slide after this. I wanted to, future items that we'll be talking about, council coming up. Obviously, we've got budget meetings. We're gonna be starting those Monday, and we're gonna be moving forward with those. Property maintenance, staff's working on that. I'm hoping by the end of January, we can schedule something for February, come back and talk. Taxi cab ordinances, something that we've heard that council may wanna entertain again. Looking at bad debt policy, that was brought up last year. Another big one is the Comcast franchise. We're gonna be working on that. And this last one here is something that we're gonna take a look at this year. We're getting quite a few complaints on antique tags. And we're having a lot, we've got a few areas, I'm not gonna single them out, where there's some vehicles that are anti, anti, antique tags that haven't moved in years. They're not even functioning. But there's that little loophole, because they're antique tags, they don't need the inspection. And so we do have some issues. I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can correct it, but it's something we need to look at. Just to just kinda let you know what's coming up. I also wanna let you know that in the folder that, that you have where you can access all your files, in that town council summit folder, there's a folder in there that's called departmental presentations. When I started putting this together, there were a couple things I was working on. First, I was trying to work on this manual. I really love this idea, this manual. But to be honest with you, I'm not 100% happy with it. I'm not a perfectionist, but I think it's a great tool. We just gotta, I need to polish it a little bit more. The other thing was, is I asked staff, my department had, to put together a PowerPoint presentation of their department with all the details. I didn't wanna take y'all's time today, you know, we would've been here all day going through all the departments. But what I want you to realize is, they're there for you to review at your leisure, and if you have any questions, you can ask me. I instructed staff, and majority of it seems to hold true, that the PowerPoint should be self-supported. You don't need somebody to read it to you. You can look through it and understand what context it is. But it will give you an opportunity, if you wanted to get down deeper into details, for an example, like the PD, if you wanna know who the major is and the two captains and a few other little things, the K-9s, you can go in that folder, look at police department's presentation, and get the information. This information will be there as long as we keep it there, so it's gonna be there. Also in that folder, there's a digital copy of that, as well as Doug's presentations and BJ's presentations. So anything that we've talked about or given out today is on that folder.
Is that in that box section?
Mm-hmm, box section. And so with that, I am done with my little...